Schedules.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you conduct the roll call?
Yes.
Council members Raywall.
Here.
Daryl.
Present.
Magnatic.
Present.
Jahadi.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Spread.
Present.
Five present and two absent, your honor.
Very good. Fran, thank you. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
Sign in, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone, council chambers. If there is anyone in council chambers that has an issue or an item they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the podium. Give us your name and address. Very good. We'll move forward with item number five. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes items 6A through B, items 8A through E, filing of communications, which is 12A, and tonight's bills totaling
So moved.
Bob?
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, dropping down to item 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution supporting an invitation for the city of Muscatine to host RagBri 2015. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? Roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing for the Forest Parkway Reconstruction Project. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, September 4th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion? A roll call again, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding the contract for the 2014 asphalt overlay program. Three bids were received with a low bid from Illowa Investment Incorporated in the amount of $358,507.78. There is $350,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Phil.
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion?
Yes, your honor, I'll just ask the obvious question. There was two of the quotes that were close and the other one was not.
Oh, the relative quotes, two of them were about equal amounts and the other one was
like 40 percent less, which is good, but I'll just ask the reasoning.
I can't tell you the reasons why, but I can tell you the historical nature of it and the low bidder Illowa is usually the low bidder all the time on these projects. I'm assuming because they're relatively close and doing other work in the area. And last year, actually, Brent was the low bid, but this year, turns out Illowa is. It has nothing to do with the specifications or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, council? Okay, this is a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change order number one for the air release valve replacement Phase II project. The amount of the change order is $4,737.4. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Tom.
Second.
Second, your honor.
I'll give that to Scott, any discussion?
I'm assuming this is an add. Not a dog.
Didn't hear that, Phil?
I'm assuming this is an add to the project of $4,000.
Yes.
Or $4,000 whatever, okay. That's what I think.
Yes, on page two, there's a summary of the amount, $88,637.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work for the air release valve replacement Phase II project and authorizing final payment to the contractor. The city entered into a contract for this project with Hagerty Earthworks on February 6th, 2014, in the amount of $83,900. There is one change order totaling $4,734.4 and a cost savings of $3,900 for the final contract amount of $84,737.4. All work has been completed and the project is now ready to close out. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Bob? Second?
Second.
Second, Scott, any discussion? And this is a roll call, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing changes to the Section 8 administrative plan. Staff is recommending city council, acting as the Muscatine Municipal Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, adopt the resolution allowing the MMHA to make changes to the Section 8 administrative plan by adopting Section 220 of the 2014 Appropriations Act and approving the biannual inspections option as stated effective August 22nd, 2014. The MMHA has developed a tenant and owner education plan to mitigate the potential health and safety risks of less frequent inspections and will provide city council with a review of the policy's impact biannually. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Phil?
Second.
And second, Tom, any discussion? This is a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change orders number one through seven for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project. The West Hill Sanitary and Storm Sewer Separation Phase II contract was awarded for a base amount of $3,686,000, yeah, $686,599.27 plus a built-in change order. The amount of the change order was to be determined once the site for disposal of the project material was determined. The total cost of the project is $453,670.80. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
Tom? And a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion?
Yes, I spent some time with both Randy and Greg this afternoon. I think we need to have a general overview of a change order of that size. I'm comfortable with what happened, but I think we all need to understand it.
Hello again, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a significant change order in 36 years. It's the biggest one that I've ever been involved with, but it's the right one. This project started off with a grading plan that did not include all the area that the city has since purchased when we bought the property at 804 West 7th. And at the time of the design, all the easements were not totally in also. And so, if you let my hands just serve it a little bit, but the grading would have been on the south side and would have been steep with the sewer at the bottom, the sewer line. The pipe that was specced for that was pipe that was capable of doing the job. However, when we came back to the council, we talked about the purchase of this property at West 7th Street, the fact that it was four acres that we could open this whole area up for a fill site for not only this project, for projects in the future, and we all agreed that this would be a good idea. I believe at the time, we estimated that in Phase III, we're looking at as much as 35,000 cubic yards that was going to have to be moved, which amounts, estimated amount of about $175,000. And that would be a savings on the Phase III project. Now, this project's going to go into Phase VIII and IX, and there's going to be a lot of fill that's going to be required and a place to put it. And this basin now becomes that area. However, when we made this decision to start filling this in, we had to change the pipe. We had to change the pipe to be able to handle the weight of the excess material that was going to go on top of it. And if you look at this change order, it's seven, but five of the seven items in here are related to pipes, and that's a $350,000 worth. There's $99,000 in here for having to move 22,000 cubic yards when what was specced was 200 yards. And that's so, that was the built-in change order that the administrator put into the note on this. So you have that and coupled with a safety fence, I think, for $3,000 or so. And the rest of this, the other $350,000 is pipe cost. Well, we recover almost half of that with Phase III. And I don't know what the following costs are going to be or the amount of material that'll have to be moved, dirt, in Phases IV, V, VI, VII, and VIII, but I'm sure it will exceed 35,000 cubic yards. So we will be money ahead in the future. In addition to that, we're filling in an area that once was nothing but weeds and trees and kind of a junked area, has been cleaned up. And by the time we're done with the entire project, and this isn't in the near future, we're in the distant future, you will have a site that is developable if the city chooses to do that. There, right now, has been an estimate that you could put as many as six to eight different homes in this area when it's said and done. Now, council, I'm just doing some quick math on this and don't hold me in any way to this, but if you use, this was four acres that we purchased and when we bought the property at 804 West 7th. We're going to turn right around and sell that house and ask for the same amount that we paid for, but we had the additional, basically, three point, what, nine acres or so. If we, that is equivalent to in the neighborhood of 170,000 to 180,000 square feet. If we sell property at a buck five a square foot is what we sell it at, then you can see if we sold this off, we would be looking at a return of $150,000 to $200,000, and that's for housing development in the future. Not saying that it's going to go that way, but what I'm saying is that you're going to have an asset in the future that you can do something with. If not, you would end up with a ravine and at the bottom of the ravine, a pipe that cannot sustain the kind of weight that could be put on it. And I would imagine that in the future, people would say, well, why didn't they think about fixing this area up when they were in here doing it? Well, the fact is, you did think about that, and that's what we're doing right now. So that is where these change orders are coming from, and that's why, that's basically because of the pipe.
I just want to be real clear that the contract is a $3.6 million contract plus a built-in change order for this particular item. There's a placeholder of 200 cubic yards in the contract for placement of dirt. 22,000 cubic yards is what was actually placed on the site. Contract calls for a placement of up to 40,000 cubic yards, not the 200 that is in there as a placeholder.
What I wanted to revisit in addition to all that, and thank you, was that when we accepted this bid, I noted that it was in big round numbers, a million dollars less than the engineer's estimate. That doesn't mean that we're going backwards on this because all other five contractors bid the same contract. That change order was built in. It's a question of whether you started at 3.7 million or 4 million. So we're still in the best possible situation we can be. When we made the decision to buy that property a couple of months ago, it was a longer-term outlook for what we're trying to do and will save us money in the long, or at least, you know, be more efficient in the long term.
And Randy, how is it going to pay back on Phase III in what manner?
It pays back in the amount of haul cost.
Falling?
Yes. And we figure that the haul cost is $5 a cubic yard, and since they won't have to haul to another place but can bring it to this site, that saves us five bucks a yard every time they bring it to that area.
Anyone else, council? Anyone else?
Understood.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to accept low bid for the quad-valve vault installation at the water pollution control plant. Two bids were received for this project with a low bid from Hagerty Earthworks in the amount of $18,500. There is $31,200 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Mike, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed nay? Motion carries five to zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the water pollution control plant to approve change order number five for the lab annex project. Due to inconsistencies with the size of the HVAC unit and door placements, it is necessary to relocate a door frame and adjust some wall depth to satisfy code requirements. A partial wall will also be completed to the ceiling to limit noise and fumes reaching work and brake stations in the front. The cost of the change order is $440 for three hours of work and minimal supplies. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Bob, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a general question. Is that project on schedule or when do you hope to have it done?
We are pretty much on schedule with this. Should be sometime in November when we have that completed.
And operational and?
Operational up and running.
Great.
We're waiting for casework and everything else, and hopefully when that comes in, we should be ready to go.
Good, thank you, John.
This is a voice vote as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the police department to purchase two Panasonic ToughPad tablet computers and mounting hardware. The police department is requesting authorization to purchase this equipment from Celtic Incorporated of Baxter, Iowa in the amount of $8,454.95. There is $9,000 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Tom over there, any discussion?
Okay.
Scott and Tom.
Scott and Tom.
Again, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item K. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve an engineering and/or land surveying services agreement for the municipal airport. This agreement is required as a condition of state and federal funding. The agreement is in the amount not to exceed $16,946 and is effective August 24th, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Tom in a second.
Second.
Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item L. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Parks Department to purchase a ball diamond infield machine. The equipment purchased, the equipment proposed for purchase would replace an aged and worn-out piece of equipment. Two bids were submitted with the lowest responsible bid from Turf Works in the amount not to exceed $17,250. There is $17,500 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott? Second, anyone? Bob, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item M. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Parks Department for the purchase of a utility vehicle. This piece of equipment is used at the soccer complex, Kentstein Park, and for trail maintenance throughout the Parks and Recreation Department. Two bids were received with the lowest responsible bid from Sinclair Tractor in an amount not to exceed $14,253. There is $14,500 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
That was Phil.
Second.
Second, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item N. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Parks Department for the issuance of a purchase order for Phase I of the waterslide restoration and maintenance project. Seven proposals were solicited with one proposal received from Slide Care LLC in the amount of $11,035. There is $31,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion?
Just a quick note, given the price that this came in, well, likely this is a multi-year, multi-phase project. We're going to be getting estimates to do Phase II, which is the exterior of those slides, and depending on those estimates, you may see that purchase coming forward here in the near future.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor, is $11,000 for maintenance or is that for new?
That's for repair and maintenance.
It's repair and maintenance.
On the interior, yeah.
Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item O. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Parks Department to conduct a 2014-2015 deer hunt. The hunt will run from September 13th, 2014 through January 10th, 2015. Hunters will be required to pass a proficiency test. Is there a motion to approve the, is there, is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, your honor.
You all?
Second.
Second, who was that?
Tom.
Tom? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item P. Presented for city council's consideration is a request for authorization to issue a purchase order for the 2014-2015 snow removal in the central business district and city parking lots. One bid was received from Bayfield Snow Removal or Bronze Escavation, whose rate increased $5 per hour on each piece of equipment used. And I'll emphasize that, $5 per hour increase on each piece of equipment used. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Tom, and a second?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item Q. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a professional services agreement for the Harbor Dredge Bridge Pipe Extension Project. Staff is recommending the approval of a PSA with Stanley Consultants in the amount of $15,850 for engineering and design of this project. There is $90,000 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second, your honor.
Second, Phil, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Did we budget $90,000 for the engineering or is that the entire project?
The entire project. The previous project was to get the pipe underground on the riverfront, and this takes it across Mad Creek.
Okay. Anyone else? Voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item R. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Muscatine County Attorney to provide prosecution services to the city of Muscatine. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Scott?
Second.
Second, Bob, any discussion?
All I'd make comment on is the fact that it's really nice to see some cooperation between the city and county, one more, one more opportunity here for participation, so I hope it works out.
Anyone else?
I just have one question, and maybe I should have asked it last week. Are we comfortable that there's not a conflict of interest between county interests and the city when they're prosecuting?
For these cases, absolutely, and if there were to be a case involving the sheriff's office and the city where there was a potential conflict, our city attorney could step in and handle those cases.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
And I think the attorney at that point is obligated to say there's a conflict.
The county attorney represents the county in these cases, absolutely.
Once again, anyone else? The last voice vote of the night, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay? Motion carries five to zero. Item 14, communication from council members. We'll begin with Councilman Raywall.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Phil?
Nothing at this time, your honor.
Nothing, thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Wow, what a quiet bunch. Fran?
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
Greg?
I just wanted to point out from my earlier email and note last week, just that the city did receive the $50,000 grant from Wellmark, which we're grateful for. That means we'll be able to do $100,000 worth of sidewalk connections.
That means we'll be able to do $100,000 worth of sidewalk connections, school connections, this fiscal year in lieu of $50,000. So we'll be able to get all of those connections done, so thanks to Wellmark.
And I have nothing, and under the category of other business, is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Too many. Who made that motion?
Three of us.
You can take your pick, I'm seconding.